At this time, we'll call to order the regular meeting of common council. This is September 17, 2024. Carrie, roll please.
Alderperson Carpenter.
Here.
Essercon.
Here.
Gantz.
Here.
Hansen.
Here.
Coniger.
Here.
Ledvina.
Here.
Pirok.
Here.
Quigley.
Here.
And Mayor Boyd.
I am here as well, thank you. Item two, Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, Approval of the Minutes of September 3, 2024, Common Council Meeting. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Carpenter, seconded by Alderperson Ledvina. Discussion or comments? Seeing there are none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item four, Public Comment Upon Matters Not on the Agenda. Comments made during the public comment period shall pertain only to matters under the jurisdiction of the common council. Anyone in person or virtually have any public comment upon matters not on the agenda? If so, just state your name in house, or virtually just state your name. For the second time, any public comment upon matters not on the agenda. For the third and final time, any public comment upon matters not on the agenda, now is your time. Thank you. Item five, Commendation for Honoring Claire Pryble will not take place tonight. We're going to push that off to another meeting. She could not make it. So, we're going to go to item six. Proclamation for Wisconsin Stormwater Week, which is September 21 through the 29, 2024. I shall read said proclamation. Wisconsin Stormwater Week, September 21 through the 29, 2024. Whereas polluted stormwater runoff discharged into rivers, lakes, streams, and other waterways can result in the death of wildlife, destruction of vital ecosystems, contamination of drinking water resources, and disruption of recreational activity threatening public health. And whereas, the Clean Water Act of 1972 prohibits the discharge of any pollutant to navigable water of the United States unless authorized by the Environmental Protection Agency. And whereas, a major source of pollutants in the navigable waters of the United States and Wisconsin is polluted urban and suburban stormwater runoff that flows directly into our waters untreated. And whereas, the common sources of stormwater pollution are sediments, road salt, automotive chemicals, litter and debris, household hazardous chemicals, bacteria, nutrients, and yard and pet waste. And whereas, it is imperative that pollutants be prevented from entering stormwater runoff from Wisconsin's roadways, homes, and businesses. And whereas, this week provides an opportunity to engage, encourage greater efforts across Wisconsin to reduce stormwater pollution. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of DePere, do hereby proclaim the week of September 21 through the 29, 2024, as Wisconsin Stormwater Week throughout the city of DePere, and I commend this observance to all of our city residents. Once again, a proclamation, Wisconsin Stormwater Week, September 21 through the 29, 2024. All right. Item seven, Presentation from the DePere Beautification Committee. So now your group can come up to the table, and I think you have a PowerPoint that you're going to plug in, because people like, up here like visuals, actually need visuals. And Sue, if you want, you can introduce both of you that are here, and if you want to introduce anyone else, that you can do as well, too.
I am Sue Walsh, 1472 Barbara Lane, and this would be Evan, who's going to do our presentation today. But as the chair of the beautification committee, can you hear okay? I think it's important to recognize the people behind the work that is done by this committee. I'm grateful for all the work put in, and I need to praise all the efforts that they put forth through this entire year, and as you can see throughout the city, it works. So I would like to have each of our members that are here tonight to stand and be recognized as the heart of the beautification committee and give them a huge thank you. And for those that couldn't be here tonight, we send you the same huge thank you. We also need to thank the city, thank you Mayor Boyd, and thank you to the city council members for your past generous budget expenditure, which allows us to keep our efforts moving forward. We also need to thank the city employees, Scott Thorson, Brian Kristenovich, and who are present at our monthly meetings. They share their expertise with us to help out in any way they can. Marty Kasabaki, too, offers his help. The beautification committee is most proud of what we've been able to accomplish by beautifying the city. We are most proud of the hours spent by our community volunteers who tirelessly work with us, give each bed, each pot, and each roundabout the care and the time they require to go to their best potential. Again, we thank you for the help the city offers us, and we will continue to keep the city beautiful. And now, we thank Evan, who is heavily favored to volunteer to do our beautification committee presentation.
Evan Erhard, 407 South Michigan Street. I would like to echo Sue's thank you to all of you and everyone that's watching for the support that we get on a daily and yearly basis, both financial and just the, hey, it looks good, that's a great job. We hear it out on the streets daily or monthly. So, the beautification committee works in cooperation with the city of DePere, the local businesses, definitely DePere, and the residents, volunteers, to promote beauty and civic pride throughout the city of DePere. So just a quick highlight of what we'll see tonight. We'll talk some more about the volunteers, a little bit about the scope of work that we take on, specifically the roundabouts, Walsh Plaza. We'll talk about Voyager Beds, a new bed in Voyager. I'd like to mention the businesses and the people that fund us and talk how that works, and then just a real brief peek at what we have coming for 2025. Volunteers, we have 11 volunteers that serve on the committee. I believe maybe we're back to 12. We had one that was off with a medical issue for a few years, and she's back, plus Scott and Brian, who sit in on our meetings and sort of point us in the right direction when we get off track, or we point back at them on the direction we think they should go. And then we have over 30 volunteers that work throughout the year on our events, our planting days, weeding, different things like that. From year to year, that varies, and some of those volunteers put in, you know, 40 or 50 hours during the course of the year, and some of them may only put in a few, they can only make it to one or two times when we're out. But they're really the heart and soul of what we do. Without volunteers, we would just maybe get a few beds planted, or some, a few pots. So it's been a real boost to our committee to keep that group moving strong. So I just wanted to show you some pictures and sort of some quick things of, we do probably 12 to 15 workdays every year, and on those workdays, it's about an hour and a half to five hours each time. Depends a little bit on what the project is and how many people show up. So you can see spring cleanup. We had 22 volunteers, and it took us about an hour and a half, so 33 hours, just to clean out the pots, get them ready for, rid of the, what was in, frozen in in some cases from Christmas, and get ready for spring. The big task in spring is our cleanup of the beds, would be cutting down anything, annuals or perennials that were left from the year before, and a lot of pruning work, specifically some of the roundabouts, the hydrangeas and the barberry get pruned hopefully every year in all of those. And then, spring planting, if you look at that, that's clearly the most time we spend, 30 hours one week on shrubs and perennials, and then the next week we come back in 52 hours on the annuals that you see in the beds around town, and 62 hours the following week to get the pots ready and have those planted. Again, then later in the summer, we do some mulching, and it's just another task that we kind of take on to sort of help out. It really helps with our big task, which is weeding. We have groups of weeders, usually in pairs or trios, that are scheduled to weed each of the beds. We go on an every-week basis, but those groups may alternate with other groups, so it may not be the same two people at the same spot every week. And that's sort of a really good opportunity, they can work on their own time. A lot of our bigger event-type things, we do during the work week, during the work day, which does limit what we can get for volunteers, but the weeding is something that we can do, you know, as a pair, you can go at early morning, you can go late in the evening, or on a weekend. So we kind of leave that up to the volunteers to schedule themselves. And then one other thing that's ongoing is we do a Fox River, a section of the Fox River Trail cleanup, which we found out that Brown County wants whoever has their adopt a trail portion to clean it up twice a year, and we go down weekly from sometime in April through sometime in September, and maybe a little bit later depending. So, and it's the section from Beaumire to just a little north of where the library is. I wanted to talk a little bit about the scope and the roundabouts that we do, and beds particularly in this map. So what I've circled in green are the roundabouts that are managed by the beautification committee, and then there's one that's sort of dashed green down there, which is the 57 and Heritage Road Roundabout. That one is taken on by a former member of our volunteer staff to do herself. We have a number of our own members that take on one roundabout. She's moving out of town, so we'll be taking that one back over next year. And then if you look, there are four roundabouts, the one as you come off of I-41 at Shearing, and the I-41 exits at Main, and the one on Main by Aldi that we do not take and do not work on, and those ones, it just became so much that we don't have the volunteer force to really take those on. So the parks staff works on those, and then they also, I believe, contract out to someone else to come in and make sure those are cleaned up. There are five planting beds along Main Avenue that are sort of on either side of I-41, and we do work on those, so we've taken those on as well. So this is just sort of the big roundabouts, the traffic centers of DePere that we take care of. We're really proud of them. I think some of them, especially at the perimeters, it's sort of a showcase as you come into town, and I will mention that I was at the city drop-off spot for compost and yard waste one time this spring, and ran into a master gardener, and he asked what I was doing, and I was talking about the roundabouts, and he said, "DePere has the best roundabouts, hands down, anywhere he goes." So we take pride in that, and like I said, we get some support from the city within that project. In addition to what you see here, we do have seven planting beds on each side of the river, so a total of 14 there, and then we took on Walsh Plaza a few years ago, so that's eight different planting spaces. So moving into Walsh Plaza, again, we took that over a few years ago. It's, what we noticed right away is that there were some plants there that were not really thriving very well. It was a grass, that's a prairie grass, and I think the area was either too shady or too dry. So we let it go for a couple of years to try and see if maybe it was just getting established, and it really wasn't. So last fall, we removed all of those. There were also a couple of plants, mostly shrubs, that were sort of aggressively spreading. I won't call them invasive, even though I put that on my slide, because they're not technically by-the-state DNR invasive species, but I wouldn't be surprised if they end up there sometime. So we took those out and sort of set the bed ready for fall. Then we came back this spring, and we planted, of the eight spaces, we planted five that are pretty much complete. Two other beds, the two largest beds, we put some minimal planting in, the ones between James Street and the Union Hotel. Over 100 plants, and that was phase one. We will come back next year, and we'll have phase two, which is to finish the two beds there along the, between James Street and the Union Hotel. We wanted to give those another year to sort of make sure that we were getting the right material, plant material. They're kind of problematic underneath the trees, but also very hot and dry there, so we want to make sure we get something that will succeed better than what we had to pull out last fall. We did add a new bed in Voyager Park. You can see Mayor Boyd standing there. Last fall, this was planted, and it was in honor of our former beautification chair and civic philanthropist Rose Smits. I hope many of you have met Rose. She does a tremendous amount of things, both in DePere and in the county over the years, just a great volunteer, a great leader, and an inspiration to all of us, and probably took the committee from a very small group, doing a very limited amount of DePere, to where it is now, and we are blossoming because of her work and her leadership. So that was a very special thing for us to put there, and we really thank the city's help in sort of having a good ceremony for that, but also putting the bed in place, getting it ready for planting, and hopefully going forward, it'll sort of be a highlight down at the, near the entrance to the Riverwalk. Just would like to touch a little bit about our funding. 66% of what we raise, or what our funds is from a fundraising drive, 184 individual donors, 17 businesses, and six civic organizations so far, and then the remainder of our budget does come from the city. I just would like to read down the businesses and the civic organizations, because without that support, we wouldn't have as good a fundraising, and I think it's important for us to recognize those that did make it. So Belkey, which is also Systems Furniture, so they're on there twice, Harmon Studios, Infinity Hair Salon, Landscape Artisans, Oak Street Cafe, The Puddle Duck, Ryan Funeral Home, Rolls, Cadets, Franzie &amp; Danin, Saks Holding, Sidekicks Bar and Grill, SKB Management, Systems Furniture, Tom Hoffman Trucking, the Union Hotel, Van Vondren, Williams Jewelers, and XO Fitness. And then our civic organizations, the Men's Club, the VFW Post, DePere Garden Club, Kiwanis Club of DePere, Pink Flamingo, and the Women's Club. So you can see it's a wide variety of people that are donating, or businesses and organizations, and some of them really are not in the downtown, and I actually think a few of the businesses are not actual DePere locations, although, no, I was going to say Harmon Studios, but I think they're on the DePere side out on Main Avenue. But those are a key to our ability, as well as the city, to continue to fund the programs and the plantings that we do. Building to the Future, we're teaming with a mail-order bulb company called Brent &amp; Becky's. They're a family-owned business, and they work nationwide with nonprofits to help their funding. And basically, the program is anybody that recognizes us as they put place their order with Brent &amp; Becky's, then Brent &amp; Becky's will give us back 25% of the total cost of their order. So it's an opportunity for us this fall, but going forward, I gave, I put a little card up for everybody to have. If anybody in the audience wants one, I've got extras. But it's, it's an opportunity for us to get some fundraising outside, and we sort of kicked it off thinking about that the draft is here next April, or in Green Bay, and daffodils bloom hopefully in April, unless something really goes wrong, either early or later. So we are going to be planting 700 daffodils throughout DePere, primarily in a location closest to Lambeau from what we cover. So that's something that we're pretty excited about, just to have, you know, some blooms in our beds early, and we'll hopefully get some money back and maybe hopefully pay for all of those bulbs. So it takes a village, and again, just to close, we'd like to thank our volunteers, we'd like to thank the city staff. They work tirelessly, especially watering in the summer and fall. It's been a tough couple of weeks here. Brian loses all his seasonal help, and then we get no rain, and extremely hot and dry weather, so the fact that I was out working the pots today, and everything still, for the most part, looks really good, is something to commend them on. The police department, we try and work with them and let them know when we're going to be out heavy in the street. You know, I, they're not stopping people, although we did sort of, they did have a sting going one time when we were out there, but just to keep, you know, we're crossing, we're wearing our yellow vests, but it's always nice to have someone else out there with our back. Our donors, the city council for funding, and again, anybody that says anything to us, I think that means more than anything else. When we're walking down the street planting, and someone comes by and honks and yells out the window, "It looks good," that really makes your day. You feel like you're doing it for a reason. Scenic View Nursery and Landscaping in Swamaco is our main provider of plants. They custom grow most of our annuals, and some of the perennials and shrubs we get from them as well. And then just finally, I'd like to give a special thanks to Don Melikar, who for years was the Parks representative on our committee, and I'm sure he's watching at home right now, and Larry Dilo for your support over the years.
All right. Very good, Evan, really appreciate that. And again, we say this all the time, and we all go to different cities throughout Wisconsin and elsewhere, but no one really rivals DePere when you go out and about and see what DePere has for the beautification of its city. It's all responsible because of all of you, and it's outstanding. And the hours that you put up there obviously illustrate all the time and the effort you put in. We love the daffodils idea with the draft coming up. Did you guys know there's a draft coming up? Anyone know that? Yeah, so that, that's a great idea. And we also like the relationship that we have with the city and your organization, and how well they both work together, because really, if we don't have that, watering the plants and all that kind of stuff, you wouldn't have the success you have, I assume, with the plantings that you have. So it really goes, it goes to the city staff as well, too, but ultimately goes to all of you. And of the, of all the support we give with the organizations we give to, that is one I think we feel extremely proud of, and we feel that we have some kind of sense of pride. Now, the question we have again, and we ask this every year, we did name the Walsh Plaza after former Mayor Mike Walsh. We did notice that his wife Sue is working there, but part of the contingent of him getting the plaza was he's supposed to work at the plaza itself. So Sue, you can pass on to your husband for that name to continue. He's going to have to put some, some blood, sweat, and tears into that plaza. Okay, will you pass it on to him?
He'll be there.
Yeah, I'm sure he will. Questions or comments from anybody? Alderperson Coniger.
First question, you may have mentioned it, but I missed it. How many pots are there that you?
I believe there's 106 now. We had two that were hit by vehicles a few years ago, and there are, I guess-
Those cement ones have been hit by vehicles?
Yeah, we had two on George Street, and within a week of each other, I think, or maybe two weeks of each other in November, October, late in the season.
Nice. And then secondarily, I know through beautification you should post and promote, but I certainly hope our city promotes the blooms, the daffodils. What a fantastic idea to have ready for the draft. So I hope we see that on social media, because we have, what, how many more weeks to plant before?
Daffodils probably you plant mostly in October, or bulbs, that's kind of the best time to plant, after sort of the growing season, but before the ground gets too cold. But I planted some in, on the roundabout at the end of the bridge last year in December.
Yeah, 25% of totals is extraordinary. That's a really wonderful fundraiser right there.
Very good, thank you. Other questions or comments? Alderperson Gantz.
I just want to say thank you for all that you do, all of you and all of the volunteers. I know I get the updates all the time, asking for volunteers, and I don't always get to go out and help, but they look amazing, they're beautiful, and everybody comments on them, so thanks for all of your hard work. It really shows and makes DePere a beautiful place.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
Again, as we normally do, and we did before, but we should do it right now, a nice round of applause for these wonderful volunteers. We can't do enough. And again, the Rose Smits dedication, the flower bed, we're all proud of that, and obviously she was very deserving, so that is something that will stay on the test of time, so thanks for all that as well, too. Evan, thank you very much, and you as well, Sue, and everybody else. Thanks.
Okay, people, let's move on to, now the not-so-fun stuff. Item eight, Recommendation from Finance Personnel Committee to Approve 2025 Non-Benefit Eligible Employees Wage Scale.
I'm going to have to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderperson Coniger, seconded by Alderperson Quigley. Questions or comments? Alderperson Carpenter.
Yes. Shannon, on page two of that list, and B, I'm getting after, if an employee retires from the city and returns to work, seasonally in a similar position to the one they retired from, the employee may be brought back at the wage they were at when they retired. Could you explain that a little bit with similar means and different things to me?
Well, I mean, really, it doesn't have to be the exact same, but that was the goal, but if it's, you know, you know, let's just say, I know we used to have, the one that comes to mind, like Equipment Operator, Equipment Operator 2, if they came back in that capacity doing something they used to do, and it's kind of within the scope, we would pay them the same wage rate that they were making when they left here.
So then if they, let's say, you just take $35 an hour, for example, so then it repeats itself, so the next year they go up to 36, or how is the scale going to be for them? Because on the other scales, if you look at them, they go up a dollar, step two, and then step three is 50 cents, and then step four is?
Our intention would be to follow that same scale for those employees. So we haven't had anybody take advantage of that yet, but that was the intent.
Well, I see pros and cons to that, but anyway. And then what happens if they stay longer than four years?
Well, our plan is to, now we haven't updated our pay scale in three years, but our plan going forward is to adjust it by a cost of living, you know, whether we do a 2% across the board, so, you know, once somebody hits step four, they're not going to get a 50 cent increase each year, but they'll get something. That would be the intent. I mean, we would like to, you know, rather than keeping employees to say status quo, we'd like to adjust them periodically, so.
I understand that part, I was just curious. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing there are no more, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item nine, Ordinance 2418, a charter ordinance creating Chapter III City Manager Plan and various corresponding amendments to the DePere Municipal Code. For discussion purposes, we'll need a motion and second, and you guys can go wherever you want from there.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Pirok, seconded by Alderperson Carpenter. Discussions or comments? And if so, we'll move forward, and at this time-
And if so, we'll move forward, and at this time, we can also have Mike Ford go to a table, too, and answer as well, correct? Do we need to open?
No.
And you'd like that, huh?
Yeah.
Mike, if you want to go table over there where you were before, you know how it works.
You have to make a motion open.
Thank you, Dr. Ford. Yes.
I'll make a motion to open.
I'll second.
Motion by Alder Person Carpenter, seconded by Alder Person Ledvina. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And I'm sure we'll have questions. Dr. Ford, maybe you just want to, you know, state your name and who you are, and then we'll just kind of go from there.
Yeah, my name is Michael Ford. I'm a professor of public administration at UW Oshkosh and director of the Whitburn Center.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments as we move forward here? Alder Person Hanson.
Yeah, so I've had a lot of questions throughout the process about where chief executive authority is going to reside. So just bear with me, I just want to kind of give a little context, and then it is very kind of nuanced, so.
Sure.
So in Chapter 62 of the state statute, it does say that the mayor shall be the chief executive officer. The mayor shall take care that city ordinances and state laws are observed and enforced, and that all city officers and employees discharge their duties. That's what our current structure of government is. Under Chapter 64, which is what we would be switching to, it says the city manager shall be the chief executive officer of the city and head of the city administration, and shall possess and exercise all the executive and general administrative powers imposed and conferred by general law or special charter upon the mayor and common council and upon various boards, commission officers, et cetera. So at the finance committee last week, you know, I brought up, if you're just looking at the state statutes, it does seem like we're moving CEO authority from the mayor to the city manager. But it was brought up by staff at the finance committee meeting that the council has already largely delegated chief executive authority to the city administrator, with the exception of police and fire departments, which has to stay with the mayor under our current Chapter 62 government, because in state statute, it does say the mayor shall be the head of the police and fire departments. So then at that meeting, I did request that the council be provided with the historic ordinances or resolutions that established that the chief executive authority was being delegated to the city administrator. So I appreciate the city attorney in our packet, starting on page 23. He did include a very old ordinance. Apparently, staff has not been able to determine what year it's from, but in that ordinance, it does seem to give executive authority to the city administrator. In particular, under 2A, it says he shall be responsible for effectuating all actions of the council which require administrative implementation. But then, it was, that ordinance was repealed and recreated in June of 1995 with the current language in our ordinance, our municipal code, which says that the city administrator shall be the chief administrative officer of the city, and whether that's different than chief executive officer, I think it's up for debate, but equally responsible to the mayor and common council. Duties for the position of the city administrator shall be provided by the job description approved by Finance Personnel Committee. So then I did ask for the Finance Personnel Committee job description, which we were provided with today. And it was interesting that that job description has pretty much the exact same language of that very old Chapter Four ordinance from an unknown year. It does say the city administrator is responsible for effectuating all actions of the city council which requires administrative implementation or as directed. So based upon all of this, I do think it is reasonable to say that the chief executive authority is already mostly with the city administrator, except for the police and fire departments. So I don't think it would be a major change if we approve this. But I would like the city administrator or city attorney to also weigh in on whether they think the chief executive authority right now is already essentially with the city administrator, except for police and fire, and then also pride some background on their concerns about police and fire not being under the city administrator right now.
Larry? Either of you two? Yep. Because that's what he asked for.
I don't want to override. Again, it came forward because, again, as you just identified, the one area that we had concerns with, and this has gone on for a number of years, is that if you had, and it was discussed at the finance committee, I think the description was an activist mayor. I think that's what the description is. But if you had someone who was elected mayor, because we are under Statute 62, technically they do have control of police and fire department, not the city administrator. The mayor, for as long, going back even before my time, has delegated that authority to the city administrator. So you are correct. Either the council or the mayor has essentially delegated pretty much all of the chief executive officer duties to the administrator over the decades. So that, we're not looking to change those components necessarily. The things we're looking to change are the things that we would have to in order to switch the police and fire department management directly under the city manager and not under the mayor in order to protect the stability and structure of the organization as it's operated for decades. We did have a couple of occasions over the past 20 years where there were candidates that ran for mayor that would have disrupted the operations for the police and fire department substantially in a negative manner for their own purposes that they had, and had they been elected. And they didn't make a secret of that at the time either. And so in order to protect the stability and to give actually the council better oversight, because you would not have the ability to fire a mayor if the mayor decided to become a more activist, take that delegation authority away from the administrator, and I use the example in the past, for example, say, direct the police chief that you're going to park all of your squads outside of this one pub every Friday and Saturday night, and by the way, I don't want you to patrol these residential subdivisions anymore. Probably not a great idea for a lot of different reasons, and you, the council, and me as the administrator would not be able to do anything to prevent that. And the police chief would have to follow that directive and do that. Now, if the city manager took that same step, you, the council, could direct the city manager, no, that's not what we want. If they refuse and aren't following the directive of the council in that context, you can always remove the city manager, where you could not remove the mayor. So it's really a stability protection. We haven't had issues up to this point. The elections did go the other direction. But again, it would provide that longer-term stability on how we operate and what we do. The intent was really to keep pretty much all the operations, as much as we can, exactly the same as today, with just switching to the city manager form to give the council that bit more oversight and to provide more long-term stability for the organization.
And then I also wanted to ask about introducing the annual budget, which I brought up in the past. I feel like the mayor has a better sense of the pulse of the community, just because they're talking to constituents more, they're going to community events. So I'm not thrilled about the idea of the city manager instead of the mayor introducing the budget. But my question for the city minister, or sorry, city attorney would be, we really could not keep that with the mayor and still be consistent with this Chapter 64, right?
That's correct.
So if, if we do approve this, then I think it becomes more important than ever that the older persons are brought in earlier in the budget process to share ideas that they're hearing from constituents, so.
Good point.
Jeff?
Good right now?
Yep.
Okay. Alder Person Ledvina.
The other thing, too, that I just want to point out is that we will no longer be able to vote on mayor's appointments to department head positions, right? Which is something that I really enjoy doing.
That would be outstanding. Correct? 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 Yeah.
And if I can comment- Well, it'd be the city manager that would appoint the department heads.
Correct.
And just so everybody understands the process, again, we're trying to stick with kind of how we've operated, because everybody's indicated they've been, at least to this point, they've been happy with how it's been operating. The city usually, the staff will create a recruitment process for department heads, will create an interview panel periodically over the years, depending on the interest. Sometimes an older person might be in on that interview panel, sometimes the mayor be, be in on that interview panel. There are times that neither are on these interview panels. To my knowledge, every time that interview group panel has recommended someone to the mayor to be appointed, the mayor has accepted that recommendation and has not chose to pick someone else or recommend someone else. And to my knowledge, the council has always, and I believe it actually unanimously, approved all of the mayor appointments that were recommended by that interview panel. So when you go to a city manager form, it'll be essentially the exact same thing. And the other thing to keep in mind, as I pointed out at the finance meeting, right now, you have the luxury of having a retired mayor who was here during the day. When Mike Walsh first was here working, he was not, and could only come in about one night a week for an hour besides meetings. So if you were to go back, and then when Mike retired, he was here all the time. But if you had someone run for mayor who, again, is working full-time, again, they will not be here sitting on these interviews. They will not be here working on the budget. Those are things that you currently have occur if somebody's retired, but otherwise you will not. It just doesn't work that way. And so that's the other part, just to keep in mind. As we operate now, as I explained at the finance, the administrator essentially has, at least as long as I've been here and even before me, I know, has essentially put together the budget. In the initial draft of when you went to the administrator, that language even said the administrator is the one to put together the budget and present it. That never changed. The language changed in 95, but the action never changed. The administrator has always put together the budget. The mayor sits in with and will comment, but essentially, it's the staff and the administrator that are putting together the budget. Our process requires the mayor to present it to you since 1995 as the executive budget, but the process has still been the same. So again, as you pointed out, you're not going to notice a difference, I think, in how we operate really on a day-to-day basis at all. But there will be little nuances, like the appointments of department heads, who signs the contracts, those types of things will be different. But again, the general public will never see the difference, and to be quite honest, in most cases, you'll never notice the difference either.
Fairly accurate.
Totally accurate.
Okay. I know we did this at finance and stuff, and a lot of you guys looked at it as well, but just in case you hear anything that just seems off, just feel free to jump in. Alder Person Ledvina just asked a question. Anyone else have something? Alder Person Hanson.
I asked this on Monday. I think staff was still looking into it, but under Chapter 64, it does have language in the statute about city manager presenting monthly reports and accounts, and then even furnishing them to newspapers and libraries of the city. Is that something that we would have to adhere to if we adopt this?
I hope that's enough.
Mike, you go comment, I guess. I mean, yes, right? You'd be getting monthly financial reports from the city manager.
But if I can comment.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be in a paper, or it doesn't have to be paper form. It could be, you need access to the information. And I believe right now, through the finance committee, for example, we're providing the monthly report on financials to the city that you all have access to. We in the past went to the point of providing even some printed documents, if I remember right, but nobody read it, so we, council decided not, they didn't want to see those anymore. So again, if you have a specific format you would like to see the information in, we're more than happy to provide that. I think in the past, we had also at one point gave you access to ENCODE, to look at the reports online directly and see them on a daily basis if you wanted to, or however you wanted to look. I'm not sure that is still occurring today, but I know we did that at one point. If you have an interest in doing that, we can provide the access to see those reports, because we did do that at one point. Shannon, I think you were here, maybe-
It was Open Gov, right?
Yeah. Whatever. Software it was.
I remember.
So again, it really comes down to, if you want to see them in a different way than what finance is providing them on a monthly basis, we can arrange for however you want to see them. Typically, most communities will do it electronically, where you can access those types of reports. The media has the same access as well. They get the same agenda, the same materials that the finance committee gets, so they receive it electronically as well. So I think we're covering probably most of the things that they would-
Absolutely. And I can say operationally, you as a city council, because the administrator is your, or the manager, excuse me, is your employee, you can make it clear how you want that information presented, and how you want them to comply with that part of the ordinance.
If a future council ever wanted to revert back to Chapter 62, just theoretically, would it be the same process that we're going through right now?
That's correct.
Okay. And then my last question is, there also is change in here about terms from two years to three years for elected officials. Just wondering why that was part of this charter ordinance and not considered separately? Is it normally contained within charter ordinances like this?
I would say if you're going to make that change, you'd do it by charter ordinance.
Okay.
And the mayor voting, something, too, right? That's in there as well.
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead, Larry.
Well, again, the reason why the terms came up is, if you remember when we had the discussion, there was a desire by you to change the terms. And we felt that if we're going to change the terms, the time to do it is when it's changing everything at once, since you're going to be doing it by charter ordinance. Just made sense to do it at one time rather than breaking it apart.
If you think of more, that's fine. This is very good, and we want this all out right now. Other questions or comments? Alder Person Gantz.
Can you explain the voting, how that's going to change?
Sure.
Please.
Who wants it?
You want me to, or Tony? I'll do it.
Go ahead.
You all look at each other. All right. So again, you have to keep in mind, even though we're going with the city manager form of government, we're going to keep a mayor, but the mayor is essentially the council president under the city manager form of government. You're going to have the mayor elected at large instead of being appointed by the city council as a council president is in a pure form of city manager. And a lot of the other things that we've talked about in the past, they're going to stay with the mayor, like appointing people to committees and all that type of stuff. But as, as far as voting goes, you cannot, under Chapter 64, take away the ability of the mayor or council president to be a voting member of the council. So now, instead of it being eight people voting, you'll have nine voting. The other part that fits into it is, the mayor currently has veto power, which to my knowledge has never been exercised. That goes away. So that's how you would have the change in it, is now James has always wanted to vote. He tells me this daily.
Daily.
So he'll be happy.
He'll be happy.
But he'll also lose his ability to veto. But that, you're correct, that is a change in how it's structured.
And it will also have a deputy mayor, which is in the, in the ordinance, instead of the council president. So that's in here.
I feel like that person should get a cowboy hat.
They're going to get a sash, I think.
A little badge, too. Deputy mayor, I like that. Does that answer that question?
Yeah.
To answer your questions? You're welcome, yeah. And then we also talked as well at finance that the mayor currently votes in public works and finance as well, so I already have that voting privilege. And then I also break ties, which happens extremely rarely, so. Other questions or comments?
Just to talk a little bit about the evolution of the election cycle, too, just for-
Yeah.
Yes. So what we also had is, given that how the elections are currently set up with four alders being elected to a two-year term, and then four alders as well elected to a two-year term, you know, alternating every year, and then we also have the mayoral election, which occurs with one group of alders as well. So consistent with the discussion that occurred in July at the study session, there was the desire to extend to three-year terms and then stagger the elections with four alders, four alders, and then the mayor. With that, what we have is a little bit of a timing challenge with the current mayor's term and how we're going to sync that up to stagger it as how it was expressed and intended. So what we would need to do is either extend, or have the next mayoral term be either for a length of one or four years, and so what's proposed in the ordinance is four years to be more consistent to get onto that schedule of staggering the elections while also extending the terms for three years.
Alder Person Hanson.
One question about that is, the, it says this will take effect January 1st of '25, so does that apply then to next year's, beginning with next year's elections?
It will, uh-
For the four that are up, I would assume.
Yeah.
Correct? I mean, that's a good question.
And then the next mayor race will be four-year term.
Yeah.
Correct. Which would be what?
A four-year, for a four-year term.
And that's in 2026, April.
Yes. I was just going to say, the mayor is in 2026 is the next term.
Oh, gotcha. I'm sorry. Yes, you are correct. Yep. Other questions or comments? And I know it's come up before, and then there's some anxiety about this, whatever, but we have to also keep in perspective, the city administrative position, I think 1974-ish is when it started, went from the clerk treasure ballpark, is the best we can probably figure. So the administrative position is a relatively young position in proportion to how old municipalities are. I know you had mentioned, well, if it doesn't work, can we, you know, go in a different direction, which obviously is the case, and you can do that. I have personally, if you wonder where I stand in all this, because it's the mayor's office, and, you know, I'm serving from previous mayors who had served under the administrative role, I don't have any anxiety over this. It's nothing that's waking me up at night saying, if we're going to do this, it's just wrong. I don't have that. And again, I take the overwhelming understanding of the previous elections, the two that happened that could have been detrimental to the organization, quite seriously. And if this is some way that we can avoid that from happening, that's a good thing, and then put more power in the hands of the council, which is the way it should be. And that's how I started this whole thing, and that's why I decided to bring this forward once it was brought up, that if we're going to do it and talk about it, it's got to be now. It has to be. And if this is for the betterment of the organization, that's what you do. But that's just me. So that's where I stand, because you should know where I stand on this, because I'm in this position right now. And as far as the change for my daily operation, it really is very minimal, you know. So that's where I am.
When did you say the three-year? When did you say the three-year will take effect? It will be in April?
Yep.
If you wanted to do a one-year term, you could.
Oh, okay, all right. Good. Other questions or comments? And again, we have Dr. Ford here, if you have anything.
No, I'll just add...
Elder person Levina?
I'll just add that I'm comfortable with this as well. I, and thank you for coming. I watched the Finance Committee meeting and...
Oh, you're very welcome.
Learned a lot.
Good.
And after, yeah, after seeing that and reading more, I am really comfortable with this. I think it's for the better of the city, and we should do it.
By the way, I don't know if this is kind of a twist of fate or whatever, but I was in Janesville today for an event, and I'm not sure you know this, and I'm not sure you knew this until I told you, but Janesville has the oldest form of city manager government in the state of Wisconsin. They started in 1923. So that's just kind of weird, and I'm thinking, oh, and I talked to the city manager, and thinking, and we had a conversation, and I think Larry, you know who he is, because that's kind of where Larry came from many, many decades ago, but, but we were talking about that, and I said, this is so weird, we're talking about the city manager position, I'm talking with you right now, can you, you know, give me some insight, and so I thought that was kind of cool. So, sorry, just a side note, side note. Other questions, comments?
One other question.
Elder person?
To Professor Ford, other than Oshkosh, are you aware of any other city manager forms of government that have a mayor still? At least the title of a mayor?
Eau Claire doesn't call it a mayor, but it's an at-large elected position, so it's exactly the same. So those are the two that come to mind that have that hybrid model, Oshkosh and Eau Claire.
And there is, what, city council president, or?
Other places have a city council president that would be selected by the council.
Very good, thank you. Do, okay, yeah, we probably should. And so everyone does understand, and the folks at home that are here, it has to be a two-third majority to approve this transition, so because of that, we will do a roll call vote, once we're done with the discussion here by anyone else. Any more questions or comments?
Make a motion, go back to regular session.
I'll second.
Motion by Elder person Carpenter, seconded by Elder person Gantz, to go back to regular session. Thanks for doing that and identifying that, by the way. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We're sticking out there for so long, sometimes you forget. Elder person Carpenter, well done. Any additional discussion and/or comments? We are now back in regular session. All right, seeing there are none, we are now going to go to the roll call vote. Carrie?
Elder person Carpenter?
Aye.
Essercon?
Aye.
Gantz?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Cunniger?
Aye.
Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, it's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. I'd like to say it's historic, but we'll just see how it goes, so. All right, thank you. Dr. Ford, thank you very much for coming in for a second time. We really appreciate that.
Happy to, and anytime.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. Congrats.
How about that? All right, thanks, thanks again. All right, that said...
I feel like I'm the first meeting.
Can I start voting right now?
I voted, but...
Only if I just became city manager.
All right, here we go, moving on to item 10, correct? Item 10, Resolution 2484, approval of a $1,200 grant from NWR TAC, New Trek, to purchase bike helmets to give away at bike rodeo safety events.
I'll make proof. I'll second.
Motion by Elder person Cunniger, seconded by Elder person Gantz. Discussion or comments? Seeing there are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item 11, Resolution 2485, authorizing backup internet service subscription with TDS Telecommunications LLC.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Elder person Hanson, seconded by Elder person P Rock. Discussion or comments? Seeing there are none, we need a roll call vote, please.
Elder person Essercon?
Aye.
Gantz?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Cunniger?
Aye.
Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 12, Resolution 2486, approving annuity internal exchange transfer request, authorizing Palion benefits to establish life insurance company of Southwest Annuity Contract for FICA Alternative Retirement Plan.
Moved to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Elder person P Rock, seconded by Elder person Quigley. Discussion or comments? Seeing there are none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item 13, Resolution 2487, approving memorandum of agreement between the State of Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection and the City of DePere Weights and Measures Program.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Elder person Levina, seconded by, which one was that? Elder person Carpenter. Any discussion or comments?
I was covering.
Seeing there are none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Sorry, motion carries, thank you. Item 14, Resolution 2488, approving grant agreement modification to divisions of Public Health Contract Number 621093.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Elder person Gantz, seconded by Elder person Carpenter. Discussion or comments? Seeing there are none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Item 15, Resolution 2489, granting a planning option to purchase to Jim Cornell Plumbing LLC, East DePere Business Park, part of parcel ED 23131. Moved to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Elder person P Rock, seconded by Elder person Ledvina. Any discussion or comments? Elder person Hanson?
Yeah, just wondering if the applicant has applied for any TIF assistance yet, or is that something that would wait until they move forward more?
Dan, do you want to take that one? Did you hear the question?
I did hear it. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Did you hear the question?
Yes, I did. The applicant has not requested TIF assistance at the time and is not included in this planning option to purchase. If they wish to purchase, they can exercise this option, and there wouldn't be any additional negotiations. If they do come back at a later date, that would be a separate matter to be handled by the finance personnel and council.
For the record, we can kind of hear you. Is there something you can do on your end?
They're not getting any TIF assistance out of us. They're just doing an option, and if they come back, then we would do a development agreement and negotiate auto if there's TIF assistance.
That's amazing. You speak fluent, Dan.
Yeah.
Got it. Nod your head if that was okay. So I think we have that then. Elder person Hanson?
Yep.
You good? Other questions or comments? Elder person Carpenter?
Yeah, maybe this isn't the right time to ask, but as the value of land keeps going up, we've probably been at $30,000 an acre for many, many years, and I know on residential lots, as we get access, our, my lot value has gone up over the years. Are we going to be increasing their land, or is there we in the price range of surrounding communities, I guess?
Do you want to take that, Dan? I think I can kind of hear you a little bit better.
Yes, I will talk louder if that's okay.
That might help.
All right, yes, actually, at Finance and Personnel, either next month or the month after, we will be presenting several different evaluations that we had done for parcels throughout both business parks, to then do a potential price adjustment. But as a reminder to the council, our cost is also an additional incentive. I guess you'd say we are below market value, but that has always been a strategic endeavor by our council. But we will bring the new revised appraisals for about five different properties to the Finance and Personnel to do an evaluation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? All right, seems that's it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item 16, future agenda items, does anyone have anything? All right, let's move up to item 17, consideration and possible action on screening city administrator applications. I think I read this first, then we get a motion.